But then I can work on the next. On my chairs.
I'm excited. I don't care. I'm more than happy to.
I'm ready to do this. 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 I'm ready to do this.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Marshall Borough Council meeting of December 17th, 2018. If I could tonight, for our moment of silence, I would like to remember Mary Ellen Mathias, who recently just passed. She was very involved with the Marshall Little League and the T-ball for many, many decades, along with her family. Family's also done many organizations they've helped with town. They donated the tree and actually installed it down at the Plaza Forest, the Christmas tree. Sold Christmas trees in town for the last 56 years. So I'm sure she's going to be very sorely missed by the Little League children who looked at her as second grandmom on the field. So if you could, please remember her, family, and friends in our moment of silence tonight, and then we'll do our Pledge of Allegiance. And please stand.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I just want to make a short announcement that we will be having an executive session for labor and legal issues, police issues, at the end of our meeting. Litigation issues, I'm sorry.
And labor.
And there won't be any voting, so we will end the meeting and then go into executive session, just to let you know. And can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
Here.
She'll be about 20 minutes late.
Yeah, she's going to be late tonight, she said.
Here.
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 Yeah, here.
Here.
Okay.
Madam President, before we get started.
Yes.
I'd like to ask to have a motion added to the agenda. And I'll read to you what I have here. This motion is to authorize the Borough Manager to issue $6,000 from the 98-02 Capital Improvement Fund to the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority for acquiring the properties deembalated at 43 and 45 Park Avenue.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to also add escrow count.
Okay, thank you.
To that. Okay, so we can just add my name. Okay, thank you.
While we're on the subject of adding things, Madam President, PennDOT has requested that the Borough sign on to and start using its ECMS portal, which is Engineering Construction Management System. Basically, all state agencies are trying to go paperless and to be an intergovernmental business partner with PennDOT. They're requiring us to adopt a resolution authorizing who the approvers will be on behalf of the Borough. So the engineers sent a resolution and a packet of information explaining what it is. If you're not inclined to do this tonight because it wasn't on your agenda and it wasn't discussed at the work session, I don't care. We can do it in January. But I'll pass this back and forth up and down the dais, and if you're comfortable with it, well, we can add it to the agenda tonight, and if you'd like to wait, we can wait. But when it gets to the end, if you'd pass it back.
Okay. Do you, since we're doing this before public comment so they can weigh in on this, do you want to wait till after they view that or add it later and then open the public comment up?
It's up to you. We can add it to the agenda, so if the public wishes to comment on it, they can. If council decides when we get to 9J that you don't want to act on it tonight, we can just hold it off until your January agenda.
Okay. Motion would be to adopt a resolution.
Yeah, authorizing the Borough to participate in PennDOT's ECMS system and authorizing the Borough Manager and the Borough Secretary to be the authorized approvers.
Okay, I'll let you do that when we get there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I had a motion I wanted to add, but it was more in relation to the budget. Should it be done at that time?
A motion to the budget, so to the motion we already have in place?
Well, there's the motion to approve the budget, but I also wanted to make a motion to remove the layoff of the police officer.
Yeah, when it gets to the time for that motion, you can make any comment that you want, but that's already said is what the motion is.
At the time when we're doing the budget item, you're saying?
You're having, that's when you're going to have your comment and discussion about it, on what you.
That's fine.
Yeah. Okay, I'll open public comment. Can I have that? Virginia, thank you. Okay, all right, thanks. Okay, open public comment this time. Please leave me your comments to three minutes. First one is Cynthia Cicero. Council Vice President will time it, but please state your name and address for the record, please.
And I'm not going to need all three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Cynthia Cicero, 606 Prospect Avenue. Last meeting, I questioned why management were getting 3% raises when we were laying off police officers. Later in the meeting, President Smith addressed this, stating that it has always been this way, managers getting what the workers got. Clearly, we are not doing things this year the way they have always been done because we have never laid off a police officer before. If there is not enough money to fully fund the police department, why can't we put a freeze on management raises until we can? Because I'm going to need better justification than this is the way it's always been for management to get raises if you're laying off police officers. Thank you, and I wish everybody a happy holiday.
Thank you. Kurt Holtenrich? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Kurt Holtenrich, 300 Melvin Avenue North. I wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. When it comes to this year with council, I'm impressed what you're able to accomplish with a lot of undue stress rolling around, a few decisions. You're doing your best for the Borough in its collection. You're not trying to do a special deal for somebody or cater to a few people in town. You're doing the best you can for the taxpayers. You have a balanced budget, no tax increase, which is great. We need to get through, clean up our budget mess issues, fill in where our shortfalls were, see what you have before you make decisions on going forward judge, looking to raise mills and our income tax. Maybe it has to happen two, three years down the road when you see where we're at. Right now, to make a rash decision and raise taxes just to fill a gap from a year or two ago, tighten the belts, get through a year or two, clean up the mess, move forward. You've done a lot of progress in town. You got the grants going, a lot of return on your investment for what you put out. That should be applauded for everyone up on council. And the residents, thank you for the work you're putting in. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Panzita? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Catherine Panzita, 401 Hillcrest Avenue. So tonight, when you passed the final budget, I was just wondering, was there another draft sent out to you after what was pointed out at last Tuesday's agenda meeting? I know Corinne's not here yet, so hopefully she'll make it by time some of the things she pointed out with the library fund, some of the other stuff. And my second question is, on the last final that was on the portal, it says the proposed budget was advertised, and there's two dates, 10/4 and 10/19. Was it secondarily sent out again, a copy? Was this budget actually done, or is what's listed on the portal just two dates? Thank you.
About the second budget or first one?
I have no idea.
Thank you. John Pastor? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
John Pastor, 25 Dieter Avenue. Once again, I'm against eliminating the Borough workers' positions. Eliminating one police officer is too much. Why we have the chief here, I'd like to know with some kind of transparency. We haven't had transparency here. We haven't had any public budget meetings. I understand the threats or whatever they were, and I sympathize with that. But I would like to hear from the chief what moves he's going to make if we lay one off, whether it be the school officer, which is unacceptable until they can, the school board can figure out hiring a security guard or protecting the children of the town, or if it's going to be the truck enforcement. New Jersey just passed a law allowing undocumented illegals to obtain a driver's license. We're right across the river from MS-13 and gangs, and now they're going to be able to legally drive over here and do whatever. They're going to be able to obtain commercial driver's licenses. I live in Ward 1, and I would estimate, I talk with Eileen, 70 to 80% of the truck traffic that goes through our town comes through our ward. The only deviating factor that people will go around it is because of the truck enforcement officer. So now you're going to have, God knows what kind of trucks, what kind of people coming through the first ward. I think we should hear from the chief before we decide to vote. On top of eliminating the three Borough personnel to save money, Mr. Jaeger brought up the $6,000 that they want to put in to buy these bladed properties. We're building parks, which I'm all for. We don't have the people to maintain it. We don't have the people to take care of the streets, plow the snow, cut the grass, and now we're going to try to come up with $6,000 to buy these properties. I don't know what that's going to do for the Borough. And I have a question here. Keystone Municipal, I've heard this from both sides of you guys. The only transparency I saw was last week when you guys had a major argument over Keystone Municipal. And Corinne, she's not here. Mr. Nae, they were talking $150,000 a year. Mr. Jaeger said it only cost us about $40,000.
Sixty.
Was it?
Sixty.
$60,000? And we're going to budget, we're already over budget this year, and we're putting another $150,000 or $170,000 for next year. I don't have the numbers, so don't quote me. Why are we putting that much money out for code enforcement if it's only costing us 60 a year? We got it. Somebody's got to come up with the right numbers and let the public know rather than executive sessions. I'm lost in that matter because here we are for another $19,520 that we're paying out for this past month. It seems that these numbers don't add up. If it's only costing us 60, why are we paying another 19? No answers.
It's your time to comment. Thank you.
That's about it. Public safety's a big thing. I think the school officer's a big thing, you know? We get rid of them, you know? I hate to, I hate to see anything happen up there, or, you know, that trucks hit this bridge at Philadelphia Avenue all the time, and I don't want to hear somebody say, "Well, sorry about your losses, but we didn't raise your taxes."
Thank you.
That's not a campaign thing.
Thanks.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
You too. Thank you very much. Eileen Laha? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Helen Laha, Morrisville, PA. Well, I have a couple things to say. First of all, when Mr. Pastor was talking, the three of you were talking up there, and I remember that you yelled at Mr. Parker for not paying attention to the residents. So I would appreciate that you showed the same respect that you wanted Mr. Parker to show. The other thing is I don't really understand what's going on with the police officers. Last month or two months ago, both Justin and Mike Jaeger had mentioned that they would have never hired a police officer had they known we'd be in financial problems. But in April, Mr. Mitchell said that we were going to have financial problems by the end of the year. Mr. Jaeger, please don't laugh while I'm speaking.
No, I wasn't laughing.
Please don't.
I'm sorry, could you tilt the mic down just a little bit? We're having a little trouble hearing you.
Okay. So in April, you voted to hire that police officer, and I was wondering why the finance director didn't reiterate that you would be in financial trouble if you hired that police officer. So I'm a little confused why you didn't know that you would be in financial officer, why you would be in financial problems by the end of the year, and why you would make such a comment. The other thing is code enforcement. I'm sure you're all aware that Yardley is getting rid of the Keystone as their code enforcers, and I just don't know why you don't reconsider that because Mr. Jaeger has pointed out many times that the $60,000 is the money that we're bringing in. However, Mr. Jaeger, please don't make comments.
I didn't. I shook my head.
He's shaking his head as I'm talking, and please don't talk. It's my, it's my time. But I would like to know why you don't point out that the fees were doubled, and that's why if we had doubled the fees and kept code enforcement in-house, that we wouldn't have the kind of problems that we have with the discrepancies in the finances. Also, I would like to know why with the Staley situation that the residents weren't informed that this was happening with all the noise going on there and the dust that's happening, why wasn't there some kind of notice given to the residents in the first ward that the silos were coming down? Because if Mr. Mitchell thinks that's one small building, I'd like to see what a big building would be because that's a huge silo, and that's a lot of noise with the ball hitting against it. And I'd also like to know why Mr. Mitchell doesn't know that Staley's is entirely on the Marshall Borough property. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll close public comment at this time. Okay. Next one to go to, we don't have any minutes to approve tonight?
No minutes.
Okay, thank you. We'll go down to the finance. 7A is Treasury's report. If anyone has anything they need to ask or say about our Treasury report tonight? Not, we'll go on to pay the bills, which is 7B. Call for motion to approve the bill list and pay the bills. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on the motion?
I do. About a month ago, I requested Flagren Associates bills for a year-to-date, and there were several comments under the description, various items discussed with the Borough Manager. I'd like to see a little bit more of a description if I'm being asked to approve a bill than various items being discussed. Is that possible?
To you.
Is that me? I couldn't hear what you said.
Yeah, I requested your bills year-to-date, and I noticed some descriptions on the invoices that you discussed various items.
Did you request them from me or from the manager?
From the office here, yeah.
Did the officer provide you with those bills?
They did.
Okay.
But the descriptions were vague. The description was discuss various legal items. In other words, if I'm being asked to approve a bill, I'd like to know something a little bit more than various legal items. I'd like to know specifically what was.
Well, sometimes we discuss three and four and five and six different things. I'm not going to, it's just that's, I've been billing that way for years and years. Bristol, for six years, I've been billing that way. It's just the way, I don't, I mean, it's exactly the amount of time that's spent on it, emails and things back and forth.
But we don't know, we're being asked to approve the bill. We don't know what the item is that we're approving.
Those are usually very small. I mean, it's usually 15 minutes, 20 minutes, a half hour.
Well, it adds up, all those bills at the end of the year, but we don't know specifically what's being, what we're being billed for.
Okay, I, you know, I think my bills are pretty specific, but, you know, I'm not sure I can get any more specific. I mean, I'll do my best, but, you know. Manager, manager who I'm speaking with is the one who gets it, and if it was a problem, he would probably flag that and say to me, "Now, this isn't, this wasn't correct." That's not the case. Those bills are accurate that you get.
But again, I don't know what it is I'm approving. Understand?
If I'm discussing.
Various legal issues.
Right. Sometimes it's, sometimes it could be a personnel issue, sometimes it can be.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, I don't, a lot of times, I don't want to be any more specific than that because it involves confidentiality of various.
Well, the confidentiality, I don't know that applies to council. There are exceptions under the Right to Know Act for if a citizen requests it, that's one of the 30 exceptions, legal client confidentiality.
Right.
But I don't know that that would apply to council reviewing, viewing your services.
If the bill is more specific and it deals with a specific person in town and what have you, I think, I think that's a very small portion of our bill.
There were several of those on the invoices.
Yeah, because I speak with, look, I speak with our Borough Manager almost on a daily basis, if not daily, sometimes several times a day, and we discuss all sorts of things. I don't.
Just even a one-line topic, would that be difficult?
I, because we discuss multiple topics every time I speak with them. There's always so much going on.
Point of order, will we be asking this from all solicitors that work for the Borough?
If, well, are there, I haven't requested the other invoices. Are there invoices that say various items?
Absolutely. They're vague and they're topical.
Who are they, please?
Off the top of my head, I've seen them. I couldn't tell you which ones.
From who, so I can request them and review them?
I would ask civil service, the civil service solicitor, that would be the first place I would look. Thanks for asking.
Okay.
And, and I'll just say, Mr. Nae, that if you're not comfortable, for whatever those reasons are, for the solicitor's bills, you can vote and exclude that. Just say you're not comfortable with it, and you'll vote for the bills if that's what you choose to do, excluding the solicitor's bills. That's entirely up to you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to point out, I have no issues with them. I used to review legal invoices at work for both labor and legal councils, and Mr. Flagren's invoices are very similar to what I've seen in the past.
Yes, they are. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I had a quick question regarding these bills to the Cintas Corporation. Is that in connection with our new janitorial service that we're using?
No.
What's that for?
I believe that was for first aid kits for the Public Works Department and their vehicles.
Yes.
First aid kits for the Public Works vehicles?
Yes, the Public Works Department, as well as their vehicles. So they have one at the Public Works garage, one or more. And they have one on each borough vehicle. For employee safety.
I believe that's where the library had to have one in their building, too.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else on the bills? Can I have a roll call, please, Virginia?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Crone?
Yes.
Councilman Larison?
Yes.
Councilman Nay?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Missman?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes 8-0. And so go on to the reports is the mayor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to wish everyone a season's greetings. I hope everyone and their family have a great holiday season this year. I'd like to mention what a nice turnout we had for Winterfest here at the borough. It's different every year, and the weather certainly didn't cooperate. And I was pleasantly surprised with the turnout we had, the families and, of course, the children. And a few adults that don't have children said, you know, "Next year, don't be shy. If you don't have little ones, you're certainly welcome." I want to thank Joe Doyle and the... From the Actors Net, he brought the carols with him. They did a great job. Everyone enjoyed singing. Mrs. Claus read "The Night Before Christmas," as she typically does. And the children always gather around it. That was nice. Of course, I want to thank the fire department. Our very own Marsville Fire Department brought Santa. Giant Foods was very kind. They provided the refreshments this year. It was, like I said, it was a nice turnout. I hope everyone remembers it, and if your schedule allows, come next year. For 2018, I'd like to mention that the police department continues to be a professional department. And they have some accomplishments that I listed. Just a few I want to highlight again for this year, in case you missed it. The fleet has been updated. For the fifth consecutive year, the police department has come in within budget. They started a drunk driver program at the high school. And that's, of course, the school resource officer. The police directives are continuously and systematically being updated. When Chief McClay and I took over, a lot of the directives, believe it or not, were still... The font was funny. They were typed written on a typewriter. So Chief McClay brought new ones in, and they continue to be worked on as things change. Something I'm sure several residents are happy with was there was some very good police work done. There was a couple drug locations that the community and the police department got together and made some success there. One other thing I'd like to mention lastly, as I do on an occasional basis, is just like to request transparency. As mayor, I would like to continue to receive information like the council does. Just recently, there was a memo sent about the Tate and Lyle property, which I wasn't included on. And even though I don't typically vote on issues, I would like to be included with whatever the council gets. And obviously, there's no way to know what I don't get until I see things that other people get. So again, I want to wish everyone best of holidays. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Our junior councilperson, Garrett Foy.
Good evening, council members. It's great to be back again for my third meeting. Throughout the month of December, our school had collected toys. And this past Saturday, we gave out toys to less fortunate families for our first annual Christmas shopping with CDC. On December 20th, we're holding our annual Christmas concert entry lighting at 6:30. Admission is free and open to everybody. And immediately following the concert, there's going to be a huge bonfire open to everyone. And I also want to wish you all just a safe and happy holidays. And I look forward to working with you all and attending all the meetings next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our action items. 9A, call for motion to approve payment to the amount of $5,228 to Capitol Health as final payment for the EMS fund as of 12/31/18.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And can I have a roll call when you're ready, Virginia?
Yes.
Councilman Drysby?
Yes.
Councilman Crone?
Yes.
Councilman Larison?
Yes.
Councilman Nay?
No.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Yes.
And Councilman Nay?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-1. 9B, call for motion to approve the 2019 salary schedule. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. And whenever you're ready, Virginia.
Can I just go for a question?
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Questions are... I'm sorry.
And I apologize if this was addressed. I apologize to the crowd and everybody on the day. I had a family obligation, so that's why it was a little bit late this evening. So I do apologize for that. We did get a revised budget on Friday. And I just wanted to see if there was any change in the salary schedule.
No, there's no change. The only adjustment was... Actually, I think you had raised it at the last meeting. I conferred with Diane at the library, and she asked to reapportion some of her projected surplus into some other line items.
Okay, I had other questions about the budget itself. But I just wanted to make sure it wasn't... Nothing was in the...
No.
Okay. So ahead. Thank you.
Regarding the salary schedule, I'd like to make a motion to eliminate the financial director position.
We have a motion on the floor. You have to... You have to... It's motion second. You have to take care of this first.
Okay.
So right now, the motion is, any question or comments you have on that salary schedule? Anyone? Anyone else? Okay. Then we need a roll call on this motion.
Councilman Dow?
Yes.
Councilman Drysby?
Yes.
Councilman Crone?
No.
Councilman Larison?
Yes.
Councilman Nay?
No.
Councilman Parker?
No.
Councilman Missman?
Yes.
Councilman Gay?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-3. 9C, call for motion to approve the 2019 borough budget. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any questions or comments on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mitchell, I just had a quick question. The only change you're saying from the budget that we received on December 5th to December 14th was a change in the library budget?
There was a change to the library, and some tree work was moved from shade tree to public works. Yeah, that was it. One correction, and then it was the request that Diane had made for the library.
Do you know which line items were changed?
I do not, no. She made them.
It's just that we got this budget, and we got no sort of memo or anything saying this is what was changed. And, you know, I mean, I know it's kind of too late now, but maybe for next year...
Well, actually, there's no increase or decrease. She's just reallocating a portion of her projected surplus from her budget into other lines.
Well, sure, but there still is a change. There's a change from this budget to the one that we got nine days ago. And we just got this in our Friday delivery with no sort of, "By the way..."
Right, yes. You were the one who asked me to look into it, and I did.
And I appreciate that. But again, even if you just would have written on it, "Hey, see page 10, line 4."
Okay.
It's just, you know, again, this may be moving into the new year. If we could get some sort of clarifications to why we're being given some things?
Regarding account 140130, I noticed in the 2019 budget, the code enforcement officer salary has been eliminated.
That's correct, because it's been reapportioned to Keystone Municipal Services.
And what line item is that? Or is that just under the code enforcement?
I believe it's 0140150, where it's been.
Well, no, for 2018, it was under two separate accounts.
That's right. I'm talking about for the 2019 budget, it's...
So everything is under 150?
Yes.
Okay. Because that was a little... One thing, when we discussed the expenses for the code enforcement in 2018, we seemed to specifically focus on account, that 150 line item. We never took into account 130. So that was projected another $47,000 in code enforcement expenses that we never... And maybe Mr. Bowers could answer. When you did your spreadsheet, did you include the code enforcement officer's salary in that?
I'm not exactly following you, Dave. Code enforcement salary was $23,000 this year, wasn't it?
No, actually.
Well, it was projected to do $47,000. This is 140130.
Right, what was the budget for this year?
Well, the budget was $18,000 for 2018. So usually, when we have the code enforcement conversation, it's revolving around 150, which we're projected to do about $215,000 for the year. But when you add the code enforcement officer's salary, that's another $47,000. So what we have is a $262,000 projected code enforcement expense, less, of course, the $145,000 projected revenue. We're now up to $117,000 for code enforcement costs to the borough for the year. I was just wondering if you included that in your calculation, that $47,000?
There was no need to. My numbers are based strictly off Keystone's invoices and what we actually paid out.
Okay. So the code enforcement officer salary, who does that go to? Who does that get paid out to?
I have no idea in the budget.
Scott?
I'm not sure I'm following your question.
01400, line 130.
Right.
On the bill list.
Right.
Who does that get paid to?
That was paid to Keystone.
Well, that's my point. See, that goes out to Keystone as well. So there's another $47,000 that we never included in our discussions for the cost of... Mike?
Are you referring to the bill list now or the budget?
No, no, I think he's on the budget.
We're under the budget, aren't we? Aren't we just...
He's looking at the financial statement.
I'm looking and referencing the line item in the budget.
Oh, okay.
See what I'm talking about, Mr. Yeager?
I'm sorry.
Do you see what I'm talking about?
I am not following you completely, no, Dave.
Okay.
I see the two lines you're talking about, but I don't know what was paid out of those either. So unless...
Well, Mr. Mitchell just clearly said that the code enforcement officer salary goes to Keystone.
Okay.
Along with item 150.
Let me interrupt just for a second, because you keep saying that it's for code enforcement. We've only ever, to my knowledge, ever had a part-time code enforcement officer in this town, unless somebody can show me differently. What you're talking about is the expense of all of the items that Keystone's been doing for us. Not just for code enforcement. So let's be clear, we're not spending $116,000 on code enforcement, right?
How are you coming up with that?
I'm sorry, I'm not done. However, we did spend $95,000 last year, plus benefits, plus all kinds of other good stuff. So when you're saying it's $117,000 for code enforcement, that's inaccurate. That's not for code enforcement. That is... There is a list of items that they handle for this borough, a list of them. And you know that, right?
Right.
Okay, sure. So why do we keep saying that it's code enforcement?
Because that's how it's described on the bill list or on the budget. It says, excuse me, code enforcement officer salary. It's line 1400-130, and we're projected to do $47,000 for that.
It says $37,000 through October 2018, right?
Okay, I'm in November with $43,125, and I projected to $47,000 for the year.
Fair enough. I'm looking at the budget.
Right, so now we go down to code enforcement expenses, 140150. And we're at $197,037 for November, projected to $215,000. Correct? So if you add those two together, it's $262,000 projected, correct?
I don't have that projection, no. Is that your projection?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So then when we take the revenues that you've mentioned from building permits...
Your mic went out.
Your mic is off.
You got a mic problem.
Got a mic problem? I'll yell.
It's on.
Use yours, okay. So anyway, item 1362410 and item 1362450 are your building permit, street fees, and your use and occupancy permits. And for the year, they're going to total project about $145,000. So that leaves $117,000 cost to the borough from Keystone.
For all the services they provide?
Right.
Okay. I don't have that projec... I don't have that same projection, Dave. That's all I'm saying. That's your projection. That's fine.
I'll post this online, so people can be aware. But the issue is, whenever we have this discussion about code enforcement expenses, it seems to be limited to item, line item number 150.
So did you want it broken down further into...
Well, no, it's broken down...
Code enforcement, electrical inspection, plumbing inspection, building inspection?
No, because all of that is already included in line item 150. What I'm saying that we've been failing to mention is the code enforcement officer salary, item, line item 130. That's another $47,000 in Keystone expenses that we have not included in the total picture for the year.
Well, I don't think that's necessarily an accurate statement either, Mr. Nay. Because at the beginning of the year, the previous code enforcement company was still cleaning up permits and inspections that were assigned to it, and they, too, would have been paid out of that account.
Out of 130 or 150?
Out of 130. So I get what you're suggesting, but I don't think it's an apples-to-apples comparison.
So then we need to...
I mean, if you're interested, I'll get you more data on what that line's been used for, because I certainly don't know it entirely off the top of my head.
I guess what I would need then is all of the... Because the Keystone monthly analysis, for example, does not include item 1, line item 130.
This monthly analysis does not need to include it. You're looking at our accounting system and how we break it up. These are the actual invoices, what we've paid to Keystone. We can't pay them any more than this, because we'd have to write a check for an invoice that did not exist.
No.
We've paid, as of last month, $189,000 and change. How that's divvied up in our accounting system is on our end.
Okay, but that there is only referencing, like for the revenues, 410 and 450, right? That's... Yeah, so revenue, I'm sorry. So then what we would need to do is just, Mr. Mitchell, have all the... I just request all the invoices from Keystone for the year?
Yeah, you can have all the invoices for the year. You can have it for the previous code company as well, if you'd like. Because they were still with us for, what, until like February or March? I think they were still cleaning up some old inspections.
Longer than that.
We're only dealing with 2018, so whatever invoice...
That was 2018.
That was 2018.
Yeah, we're only talking about 2018. So it would be for all the invoices received against that account for 2018, correct?
Right, so it would be for Keystone and the previous code company as well.
Sure.
Yeah, if you send me an email, we'll get that together for you.
Okay. Anyone else?
If I may, Madam President?
Sure.
Nothing I'm going to say is deeply involved as the last comments. Just a couple of things, observations and concerns. Personally, I am a little concerned what's in the budget for the police pension. It looks a little low to me. Of course, no one really knows exactly. It's just like trying to predict exactly healthcare. It's very difficult to do. And I've often said a budget's your best guess, but it doesn't mean it's just a guess. It's a calculated guess on a lot of things. Another concern, and again, it's not really... You know, I know people on social media love to twist things around. But just to grab one example for engineering, there's quite a bit of money for year-to-date. And I'm not saying that they didn't work and deserve every penny of that. But the things that concern me is when I see that there's a much lower budgeted amount. But when it carries over to next year with the same low amount, that's where I... To me, that's a little bit of a red flag, that why isn't stuff like that brought up? Because if something comes in over budget, I realize that can happen very easily. But usually, that's how everybody adjusts. I see a lot of these numbers have been adjusted. But there are a few that really doesn't seem to be adjusted for 2019. So that's all I wanted to share.
Thank you. A roll call, please, Virginia, on this. There is no point of order. We're ready to vote.
I ask that before you vote, I would like the chief to go up there and explain to the public...
That's not... That's public comment for that. That's not time for this.
Well, I ask for transparency.
That's not a proper point of order for what you're asking for up here. I'm sorry. It just isn't.
You're not going to allow the chief to explain to the public what he's going to pull out of public safety?
Listen, he's already answered all these questions for public safety. And you have every opportunity to ask him whatever you want. We're ready to vote on this. It has nothing to do with that.
Does all the... All these council members know?
We're in the middle of a motion. I'm going to call point of order. We're in the middle of a motion right now. Thank you. Roll call, please, Virginia.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Crone?
No.
Councilman Larison?
Yes.
Councilman Nay?
No.
Councilman Parker?
No.
Councilman Missman?
Yes.
Councilman Maker?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-3.
Shame on you.
9D, call for motion to approve the 2019 tax levy ordinance. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any questions or comments on the motion? Have a roll call, please, Virginia.
Council Dowd?
Yes.
Council Drysby?
Yes.
Council McCronicle?
No.
Council Larison?
Yes.
Council Nye?
Yes.
Council McWhorter?
No.
Council Missman?
Yes.
And Council Nye?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-2. Sorry.
Why don't you start now?
I'm sorry.
Two of us would be too many.
9E, call for motion to authorize an application to the Green Light Go program and to commit municipal resources in the amount of $66,958 to upgrade the traffic control device at the intersection of Pennsylvania and Philadelphia avenues. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any questions or comments on the motion?
Yes, is this, I don't think I really got an answer for this last week, but is this one of the three grants that we're going to be going for in 2019?
We've not determined what three we will apply for in 2019. This is being applied for in 2018.
Where are the funds coming for 2018 to pay for this?
Well, typically, grant match funds have either come from the REC fund or the street fund, so this would come from the street fund.
And I will just say that this motion and the next one for these upgrades are needed for the traffic signals that are very outdated, we have a lot of problems with those, so that's what this is actually for.
The one that PennDOT suggested? Am I correct on that one?
Yes, this actually is for the one at South Pennsylvania Philadelphia Avenue, where the traffic control device is actually being operated on a computer on loan from one of our contractors. It's in such deplorable condition.
Yeah, so these are for much-needed upgrades for those traffic signals. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Can I have a roll call, please, Virginia, when you're ready?
Council Dowd?
Yes.
Council Drysby?
Yes.
Council McCronicle?
No.
It's her word.
Yes.
Council Nye?
Yes.
Council Parker?
Yes.
Council Missman?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-1. Next one is 9F, call for motion to authorize an application to the Green Light Go program and to commit municipal resources in the amount of $85,228 to upgrade the traffic control device at the intersection of Pennsylvania and Trenton Ave. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any questions or comment on this motion?
And this is for 2019, correct?
2018.
This is a 2018 application.
And are the funds coming from the same line item?
Yes.
Street fund, yes. Same thing, free upgrade on the outdated traffic lights. Anyone else? And can I have a roll call, please, when you're ready, Virginia?
Council Dowd?
Yes.
Council Drysby?
Yes.
Council McCronicle?
No.
Council Larison?
Yes.
Council Nye?
No.
Council Parker?
Yes.
Council Missman?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-2. Next one is 9G, call for motion to award the Historic Summer Seat Accessibility Improvements Project to Olivier and Associates Incorporated in the amount of $169,373 per recommendation of the borough engineer. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any questions or comments on this motion?
This was the grant that we got from CDBG?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
And it's under budget, correct?
Yes.
Yes, it is, and there was no municipal match on this particular grant. This is the company that, I think there was several of them that applied for it in the bids, and this company won the bid. Anyone else? This is for the sidewalks and ADA compliance. Have a roll call, please, Virginia, when you're ready.
Council Dowd?
Yes.
Council Drysby?
Yes.
Council McCronicle?
Yes.
Council Larison?
Yes.
Council Nye?
Yes.
Council Parker?
Yes.
Council McWhorter?
Yes.
And Council Nye?
Yes.
Motion passes 8-0. Next is 9H, call for motion to approve payment in the amount of $3,000 to the Marshville Senior Service Center Incorporated for 2018 budget allocation. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Take your pick.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any questions or comments on this motion? I'll just say that the senior center is doing a very nice job as they're doing the improvements down there, and the programs that they're giving to everyone, so I give them a lot of credit for moving forward with things down there. Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Council Dowd?
Yes.
Council Drysby?
Yes.
Council McCronicle?
Yes.
Council Larison?
Yes.
Council Nye?
Yes.
Council Parker?
Yes.
Council McWhorter?
Yes.
And Council Nye?
Yes.
Motion passes 8-0.
ECMS.
Motion 9I?
Actually, before we do that, has the ECMS packet reached the end? Could we have it back for Council McCronicle? Thank you. She wasn't here when we circulated it.
Take a moment to explain to her what that was, since she wasn't here.
Well, I will, under 9J.
While we get to it, okay. 9I?
I think it's more electronic.
Okay.
Thank you.
Corinne, before you got here, there was a motion in the very beginning that was added?
Two.
Actually, two were added. 9I is the one that's coming up here, and it's actually, money goes to the escrow account for the RDA for acquisition for property, so that's what that was for, and then Mr. Mitchell will tell you about the next one coming up, which is what you have right there. Okay. 9I, motion to authorize the borough manager to issue $6,000 from the 9802 Capital Improvement Funds to the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority for an escrow account to be used for acquiring the 43 and 45 Park Avenue properties. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this motion?
I'll make a quick comment, Madam President.
Sure.
So this was a part of the initial packet that we received from the RDA. It's one of the final steps. There are more steps to be taken, but it's one of the final steps to resolving the bladed properties on Park Avenue that were burnt down a year ago last Easter. So this will put us in position to be able to move forward and have those addressed.
Okay. I will just also state that the RDA will look to recover the money, plus any other expenses from the sale of the properties, once that transpires. So that money would be allocated back to the account. This will be secured in an escrow account with the RDA.
So if they use that money, once they sell the property...
Correct.
That money, whatever is used, will be put back into that capital improvement.
Right, yeah, they have to pay any taxes and things like that, have to be, any fees against that have to be paid, but yes, any money that's after that would then come back to the borough, yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this?
I just have a comment for Mr. Jaeger. I know you were the one that championed this. I just request in the future, we don't put it on the night of the meeting, but all the advance warning would be nice, but I do appreciate that we're moving forward with these.
Understood. And my apologies for that, actually. I did receive an email from the RDA saying that we needed to take this step, or we'd delay the process a little bit.
Yeah, they actually wanted it sooner, so we have to let them know that they need to actually get the information a little quicker to us also, so I understand what you're saying totally.
You said this was for 43 and 45 Park Avenue? Do you know, there was a gentleman that came to our meeting a few months ago and talked about one of the properties that was being worked on. Do you know if that's one of these properties?
No.
It is not.
It is not, okay.
I believe that gentleman owned a union property.
No, there was a gentleman that was here for one of the Park Avenue properties as well. It wasn't his property, I believe it was his neighbor.
Right.
Oh, the ones that were resolved and rebuilt, is what you're talking about?
Is that the one that you're talking about?
Gentleman by the name of...
Well, they were still, they remained on the agenda that day, that evening, I should say, and that motion did pass...
Yes.
...to mark them as bladed. So I'm asking, is that, these properties?
No. Those properties were rebuilt. They're not, there was no reason to take any action on those.
Okay.
I apologize. Can you just repeat the motion? Sorry.
Motion to authorize the borough manager to issue $6,000 from the 9802 Capital Improvement Funds to the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority for an escrow account to be used for acquiring the 43 and number 45 Park Avenue properties.
Thank you.
Sure.
Send that on back.
Everyone's okay? Can we have a roll call, please, Virginia?
Council Dowd?
Yes.
Council Drysby?
Yes.
Council McCronicle?
No.
Council Larison?
Yes.
Council Nye?
Yes.
Council Parker?
No.
Council McWhorter?
Yes.
Council Nye?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-2. Okay, 9J, I'll leave it up to you, Mr. Mitchell, to put that motion up there.
Yes, this would be a motion to authorize the, sorry, when was the vote on the last one?
I'm sorry?
When was the vote on the last one? 6-2. Yeah, I'm sorry. This would be a motion to authorize the borough to participate in PennDOT's ECMS, which is Engineering Construction Management System. It's an online portal to be an intergovernmental business partner with PennDOT, and it would authorize the borough manager, the borough secretary, and the assistant secretary to be authorized approvers on that system. As I explained earlier, state agencies are trying to go paperless, and they're requiring more and more to be done electronically, and the ECMS system is the system that PennDOT uses. And again, dismissed your agenda tonight, if you're not comfortable with this, we can put it on your agenda for January, but the borough engineer was hoping to have this set up for the start of the new year.
Is it out of order to ask a quick question?
Sure, first I'll have the motion, and second then I can discuss whether you want to do it or not.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a second, motion and a second on the floor. Is questions or comments on this?
Yeah, I just have a quick question, Mr. Mitchell. And I didn't see it in there, I just want to ask, double-check there. Is there any financial impact? Mr. Mitchell?
No, I asked it beforehand to everybody. Oh, you could, I'm sorry, I was being spoken to.
Is there any adverse or positive financial impact by doing this?
Neither.
Okay, thank you.
It's, PennDOT's requiring, and eventually they're going to stop taking paper, and then you're either in or you're out, so.
Does this require a motion? Just out of curiosity?
You're required to do the resolution, it was in the packet we circulated, because you have to designate who the authorized borough officials are who are approvers.
And like we said, if it's, you did get this tonight, if it's, if council isn't comfortable and you don't want to vote on it, you'd rather look it over more and take it into January, we can do that.
Do you want me to read?
She has a description of it, if you'd like her to read it.
Danielle, can you read the description? Okay.
So this way the public is aware of what this portal is. Whereas the applicant desires to register as department business partner, to be permitted electronic access to the Engineering and Construction Management System, hereinafter referred to as system, whether singular or plural, for the purposes of entering information into and exchanging data with the system. And whereas the department, in furtherance of the powers and duties conferred on its Section 2002 of the Administrative Code of 1929 as amended 71PS, Section 512, to design and construct state highways and other transportation facilities, and to enter into contracts for this purpose, is willing to permit the applicant to electronically submit technical proposals, invoices, engineering plans, designs, and further documents necessary to design and construct transportation projects as part of the department's program to use the system. And whereas Section 2001, Period 1, of the Administrative Code of 1929, as amended 71PS, 511, Period 1, authorizes the department, through the Secretary of Transportation, to enter into all necessary contracts and agreements with the proper agencies of any governmental, federal, state, or political subdivision for any purpose connected in any way with the Department of Transportation of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Now therefore, in consideration of the foregoing premises and mutual promises expressed in this document, and intending to be legally bound, the parties agree as follows: the applicant is responsible for furnishing and assuming the total cost of software and hardware necessary to connect the system. Such software shall include an operating system, an internet browser, and software needed to operate the modem. The applicant is responsible for the procurement and cost of any data communication lines required to connect to the system. The applicant is responsible for the cost of telephone lines and usage. The applicant is permitted to access the system as the department shall direct.
Much clearer.
Thanks, Daniel.
I'm sure it is.
Okay, first I'll ask everyone, do you want to vote on this? Do you, yeah, we do have a motion and a second, yeah, so, okay.
I'd just like to say, if we do vote this, good luck, Scott, and to everybody else, I've used the system.
It's horrendous, I know.
Is user-friendly as that description?
I've used it before, I know. Unfortunately, it's that, or you really have no other choice.
So supposed to like, we're better communicating with them, is that the idea? Not that they communicate better now. Okay, well, I guess we'll have a roll call on this.
Council Dowd?
Yes.
Council Drysby?
Yes.
Council McCronicle?
Yes.
Council Larison?
Yes.
Council Nye?
Yes.
Council Parker?
Yes.
Council McWhorter?
Yes.
And Council Nye?
Yes.
Motion passes 8-0.
Thank you.
Okay, there's nothing under unfinished business, correct? We don't have anything? And nothing under new business, so we'll go to borough officials at this time.
Madam President, could I throw a New Year's resolution out there for council's consideration?
Sure.
In the coming New Year, would you, at this point, entertain one meeting a month in 2019? We've already advertised two, and if we needed to, we could still use two, but if we don't, would you be comfortable going to one meeting a month? I know we've talked about this before, and we weren't there yet, but what do you think now?
I'm not. Not yet.
Council Dowd?
I mean, just if we take this last month for an example, I certainly am not comfortable. I mean, again, we didn't really have any budget meetings, and we just got a revised budget three days ago, and all this and that, and I still, I think that we need more, at least, at least two meetings a month, just personally.
I agree.
I agree. One sounds nice.
I'm here anyway, so I have no horse in this race.
Okay.
Other than trying to save you time and money.
I'm bored in the evening myself, so it's good, I need somewhere to go, so thank you.
Well, council is at least four.
Yeah, I think it requires a little more discussion. I'm not opposed to it, but it requires more discussion.
Okay, then I guess it's something in the New Year we'll look into and maybe have that discussion at an agenda meeting in January.
Perhaps a couple more months.
See if anything else has changed.
We've already advertised two, and if we needed to, we could still use two, but if we don't, would you be comfortable going to one meeting a month? I know we've talked about this before, and we weren't there yet, but what do you think now?
I'm not. Not yet.
Councilman Dowd?
I mean, just if we take this last month for an example, I certainly am not comfortable. I mean, again, we didn't really have any budget meetings, and we just got a revised budget three days ago, and all this and that, and I still... I think that we need more, at least two meetings a month, just personally.
I agree.
I agree. One sounds nice.
I'm here anyway, so I have no horse in this race.
Okay.
Other than trying to save you time and money.
I'm bored in the evening myself, so it's good... Somewhere to go, so thank you.
Well, council is at least four.
Yeah, I think it requires a little more discussion. I'm not opposed to it, but it requires more discussion.
Okay, then I guess it's something in the New Year we'll look into and maybe have that discussion at an agenda meeting in January.
Perhaps a couple more months.
See if anything else has changed. Okay? Deal with it a little bit down the road? Okay. Anyone else on Borough Officials?
We're doing Borough Officials now?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Well, I'd like to go back to the laying off of the police officer again, and I'd like to make a motion that we not lay off one full-time police officer.
Yeah, but you just approved a budget. Your budget has... You just... Council just approved the... Excuse me, the salary schedule, the borough budget, and tax levy, which covers all that already.
Right.
You guys already voted on that.
Yeah, I attempted to make that motion earlier.
Well, had that been defeated, had the borough budget or the salaries been defeated, then someone could have made a motion to do a different one, but since it passed, that's your budget at this point. Council has a right to reopen a budget, but that's not...
Yeah, not...
But that's not tonight.
Next year, not this year, in January.
Yeah, I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The finance director becoming the treasurer, have those two positions that are currently doing the treasurer, have they been eliminated?
It was up December 1st. You voted for December 1st. Well, I don't think you did, but yeah, it was voted December 1st.